We'll call this meeting to order.
All rise. Oh, yes, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Mr. Sullivan is going to offer our invocation tonight.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity you gave us to be here tonight to conduct county business. I thank you, Father, for the rain that you've given us, for the beautiful Monday that you've given us, Father. I pray for the family of the young boy that lost his life this weekend in the Fairfield area. Lord, that you be with them and comfort them today and tonight and in the coming weeks and months ahead. I pray, Father, that as we meet here tonight, as we honor people and as we conduct the business of our county, that you would continue to bless us and bless our endeavors in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Will you pledge a flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that we also keep, I talked to Mr. Wright before we got started tonight, keep our sheriff's deputies and our first responders on a call like this that involves the tragic loss of a child. It's, we want to always remember our, remember the family, but also remember those that were first on the scene. I know it was hard on them as well and pray for the, pray for the community, the Westmoreland Elementary community and the Oakmont community as they were hit hard by this tragedy. So let's lift them up in our prayers. All right, is there anyone that wishes to make public comments tonight on an agenda item? All right. Thank you, Mr. Weatherford, and no public comments tonight. And I think we have something really exciting tonight, looking at some of our certificates of recognition. We've got, oh, I'm sorry, we got, let's do the roll call and then I'll wax a little poetic. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Roll call is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your presence. At 23 members present, one member absent, voting no.
Mr. Mr. Foster had a home repair project that got into water, that got into five or six other different things. So he was, yes, a little underwater at the moment. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Okay, back to waxing poetic with our roll call. Your veteran service report is on your, on your chairs or in your packet. We have a thank you note from Commissioner Ring thanking us for our thoughts, prayers, cards, and gift for his father. And, Mr. Ring, you continue to remain in our, in our thoughts and prayers and your family does during this time. And, you know, what got me kind of excited is Mr. Hyde passed out The Girls of Atomic City. And we've got a lot of different, you know, we've got a wide cross section of Sumner County tonight. We've got our young people that are winning state championships and competing at the highest level. We have a very esteemed woman who's part of the fabric of our nation's history. And we've got, if you knew Bobby Leon Thompson, he was a big fixture of Sumner County life and politics for many years and was a very interesting part of Sumner County politics and life for many years. The kind of guy that they just don't make anymore. So it's a great night to celebrate the diversity of Sumner County, the past, the present, and the future. And it's an exciting time to go through our certificates of recognition. So that's enough of me waxing poetic. I'm going to ask for Mr. Hyde. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Hyde.
Anyone else that would care to join me, they're certainly welcome. I'd like for Ms. Johnson and her daughter to come forward at this time, if they would. We have a chair for you right here, Ms. Johnson, after you turn around and let everyone see you.
I think they've already seen you.
I'll tell you, Ms. Johnson is one of the most amazing people I have met. And I have enjoyed so much the opportunity to visit with her. And I furnished on your desk a copy of a book that's been written about the Girls of Atomic City. They're known as the Girls of Atomic City, the Caltron Girls, so forth. They were the ones when Oak Ridge Lab was first opened for work on the Manhattan Project, the atomic bomb, she was one of the young ladies right out of high school who sat there on a stool watching the meters on the machines as the uranium was being enriched. Now, she had no idea what she was doing because it was very secretive. No one was allowed to know. And she's, she has said, and then I read too in some of the background information, that if anyone started asking questions, they were, all of a sudden, they just disappeared. They were never, never more there. They lost their job, they were sent home or whatever. But you didn't even ask questions about what do you do? So it's certainly a pleasure to have her here tonight with her daughter Vicki, who is also a resident of Sumner County and helps her a great deal.
One question they asked, what will we be making? We don't have seventy cents an hour.
Right, we were going to get to that. But that was a safe answer. I make seventy-five cents an hour. And that was good money then. That was very good money then. We're glad to have Vicki Johnson with us, who is a realtor here in the county and also helps get her mom around from place to place. And it's just indispensable to her, although Ms. Johnson is independent and lives on her own. I want to read this certificate to you. Ms. Helen Johnson was born on June the 20th, 1925, and lives in Hendersonville, Tennessee, and just recently celebrated her 96th birthday. Whereas Ms. Johnson graduated from high school in Hamlin County, Tennessee, in 1944 and worked hard her entire life. And whereas Ms. Johnson was hired by Eastman Corporation, which led to her job as a Caltron Girl, an important role in the success of the Manhattan Project. The job was a secret, and when family members asked her what she was making, she always replied, seventy-five cents an hour. Whereas for her efforts, democracy and freedom were protected, and our country was allowed to continue as the greatest on earth. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 19th day of July, that this body does hereby congratulate Ms. Helen Johnson on reaching this incredible milestone and wishes her happiness, joy, and love now and in the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Ms. Helen Johnson. And I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Hyde, seconded. All in favor say aye. All in favor, opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Now, I'm going to ask Ms. Johnson if she would like to say something, and I know she will. So would you like to say something, Ms. Johnson?
They're saying for me, Vicki.
Oh, okay, okay.
My mother is a very outspoken person, and you never wonder what she's thinking. But for once, she is allowing me to speak on her behalf. Thank you so much for this recognition tonight. This is a big event for a 96-year-old lady, and it pales only to her recent 96th birthday party that we celebrated with her. A special thank you to Commissioner Hyde, Commissioner Tucker. We appreciate you guys for taking the time to bring my mother's service to the attention of this body. One of the supervisors at the Oak Ridge plant where she worked is often quoted as saying, "We can train you how to do what is needed, but I cannot tell you what you are doing. I can only tell you that if our enemies beat us to it, God have mercy on us." Thank the good Lord, and with the help of some high school graduates from East Tennessee, known as the Caltron Girls, the U.S. won that race. Mama didn't know what her job was producing, but I can assure you that 19-year-old girl knew she was working for the Defense Department and proud to serve her country in its efforts in World War II. Her experience in Oak Ridge began a life of service, a mother of four children, a preacher's wife, and a high school cafeteria baker. I think she's pretty special, and thank you for honoring her here tonight.
I would like to say that when I walked in to visit with Ms. Johnson, she, her daughter mentioned her being outspoken. I introduced myself, and she said, "I have voted for you many times. Why have you never visited?" So that's a way to throw you off guard before you even have a chance to say anything. But I will visit her now.
And, Mr. Hyde, Ms. Tucker, I want to commend y'all, like, what an honor. And I'm so glad that our young people got to, got to meet Ms. Johnson tonight and hear her story. So, and thank you for coming out, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for your service. We really. And I have another confession to make. I got so excited about honoring Ms. Johnson that I skipped the approval of the agenda in the minutes. So I apologize. I was just like, I'm a history buff, and the thoughts of this are just so exciting. So thank y'all so much for coming out. You've got your regular and consent agenda on your desk. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Nipper, seconded by Commissioner Shale. I see no one in the queue. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. Is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Shale. I almost got Commissioner Graves, but he was just waving. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Graves. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Commissioner Baker Ring. If Taylor Black and her family will come forward, want to come forward?
Certificate of Resolution, of Recognition, honoring Taylor Black. Whereas Taylor Black was recently crowned Tennessee's Outstanding Teen for 2021. And whereas Taylor's love of helping others led her to begin, to begin competition with the Miss America Organization, where in her first competition, she was awarded Miss Congeniality. And whereas she was set to compete in Tennessee's Most Outstanding Teen in 2020, which was postponed due to COVID. And whereas in March of 2021, she competed for and was crowned Tennessee's Most Outstanding Teen. And whereas her social impact initiative to educate people about the diseased lupus. And whereas Taylor is a 2021 graduate of Galton High School, where she was a cheerleader, member of the Choral Performers, student ambassador, and named Lady of the Green and Gold, and will be attending Spelman College. And whereas Taylor will be representing Tennessee in the 2021 Miss America's Teen Pageant Competition in Orlando, Florida in July. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 19th day of July, 2021, that this body hereby congratulate and commend Taylor Black for her outstanding accomplishments. And the people of Sumner County in Tennessee wish her the best of luck in her competition and a successful future. I make this motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There you go. Would you like to say something?
Of course.
Hey, everybody. So thank you guys for having me, and I hope and pray to make you guys proud. Next week, competing at Miss America's Outstanding Teen, representing Tennessee. So thank you.
Taylor, thank you and good luck. Well, I'll be pulling for you from Sumner County. All right, Mr. Wright. And, Mr. Holt, if you would come up and join Mr. Wright.
Ms. Julie, if you would. I have a resolution here in front of me honoring the memory of Bobby Leon Thompson. If you never had the pleasure of meeting Bobby Leon, you really missed something. He was a special individual, and that's in a good way. He is a huge reason that I get to sit in that chair every month and represent District One. He was the first one to ever come to me and ask me to run, and I will be forever grateful to him and his family for that. Whereas Mr. Bobby Leon Thompson, who served as a county commissioner from 1994 through 2006, passed away in July 2021. And his passing is a great loss to Sumner County. And whereas Mr. Thompson served on numerous committees and organizations within the county government, as well as being a public school teacher, starting in 1958 and retiring after 40 years of dedicated service to his students. And whereas over the span of his career, Mr. Bobby Leon Thompson positively impacted the lives of countless students and citizens as both a teacher and valuable mentor, and will be sorely missed by all who had the pleasure of knowing him. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of July, 2021, that this body does hereby owe a debt of gratitude to Mr. Bobby Leon Thompson for the dedication and professionalism he displayed over the decades. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to his daughter. Thank you, Ms. Julie. Thank you, Bobby Leon.
Is that a motion, Mr. Wright?
That is a motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Wright. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. I'm very humbled by this. My father would be extremely humbled by this also and probably tell everyone that you should go home, and you all shouldn't be wasting your time on him. But I certainly appreciate it. Terry, thank you very much. Mo, thank you. Mr. Holt, thank you very much. And my father, many of you know or don't know, was an educator, farmer. But more than that, he was a father and a great friend, and as Terry said, a great mentor. And you always knew where you stood with him, right or wrong. There was no middle ground, no gray area with him. And I always admired his work ethic. He grew up in the day where there weren't student loans, there weren't Pell Grants or anything of that nature. And he worked his way through college at Austin Peay State University, then followed it up with a master's degree from Vanderbilt University, which he was very proud of, and was a lifelong educator of the Sumner County school system. And over the years, taught thousands of children. And to this day, even in the hospital in his last days, there was somebody who worked in the hospital who came to see him, and he remembered him. He was a student of his at Galton Junior High School when it was a junior high. And like I said, I'd always admired his work ethic. He always took care of his family, always made sure that we were provided for, we never wanted for anything. We weren't spoiled by any means, but he always instilled in us the value of hard work and making it on your own. And some of his final words to me were, "Trust the Lord." Always trust the Lord. And I'll ever, forever be grateful for that. He was a wonderful father. And I'll never know why I was so blessed to have him in my life. But thank you all so much, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Let me, let me say something about Bobby Leon. I served with Bobby Leon as commissioner. Bobby taught me a lot of things. And one of the, I think the most primary thing that Bobby Leon taught me was to have integrity. And Bobby had integrity. Bobby was like my, Bobby was very educated, but he was like my grandparents and my parents. He was country, and he was connected to the land, and I admired that about him. But he was savvy, and he always had integrity, as I said. And he did what he believed was the right thing to do. And, you know, probably what defeated Bobby, because he's from a very conservative district, he knew that the highway department needed more money. And he worked out a deal. Were you here then, Mr. Hyde? I think you were here, Mr. Hinton. He worked out a deal where, I can't remember if it was two cents or three cents, two cents, that he committed to the highway and voted to raise taxes. He knew that was not going to go over well in his district, and it probably defeated him. But the reason he did it is he believed it was the right thing to do. And in Bobby, I could see that that's what we're here for, is to do the people's business and do what you believe is the right thing to do. And one more little story, when I was talking to Julie a minute ago, here walks up Commissioner Comenden, and he said, "I want you to know, your dad gave me the first spanking I ever had." And I said, "Well, I said, Julie, he needed a couple of more." But Bobby was a great guy, and we will miss him. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Goo.
I was impressed by everything we've done so far tonight. These are always fun to do. And Miss Tennessee, Miss Congeniality, but the guy that will never got that vote is Mr. Fuscel. If you would join us. Mr. Mike Fuscel, yeah. Mr. Fuscel is a very influential businessman, sits on boards in Hendersonville, past Sumner County elected official, and outgoing chairman and president of Rock Castle. This, we're in the district, Rock Castle, of Mr. Taylor and Mr. Becker. I sat on the board with Mr. Fuscel, first time he was president, what, 10 years ago?
Yeah.
At Rock Castle. If you've never been to Rock Castle, especially some of you students and so forth, it is one of the best gems in Sumner County. We have so many gems, but Rock Castle is one worth noting. So we got a special resolution here that Mr. Fuscel will present back to the Rock Castle. Incoming president taking his place is Mr. Mike Gunn, also influential businessman in Hendersonville. Resolution honoring historic Rock Castle. Whereas historic Rock Castle is a Sumner County institution and a constant reminder of Sumner County's proud history. And whereas Rock Castle is 225-year-old landmark and was once the home of General Daniel Smith and his family. Whereas General Daniel Smith served in many government roles, including being named by George Washington as Secretary of the Territory South of Ohio and later served two terms in the United States Senate. Whereas Rock Castle is late 18th century plantation house and a grand example of the earliest known version of the federal-style architecture in Tennessee. And whereas the construction of the historic Rock Castle started in 1784, was completed in 1796, having been delayed by conflicts with the Native Americans. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners in this regular session meeting on July 19th, 2021, that this body hereby recognize historic Rock Castle for its rich, rich heritage in Sumner County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body so as to make a permanent part of the records of the body. And the clerk is hereby directed to furnish a copy of this resolution to Rock Castle Plantation. And I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goo, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you on behalf of the Board of Historic Rock Castle for this recognition. I'll be honored to present this to the Board at their next meeting. Historic Rock Castle is without question a historic treasure in Sumner County. General Daniel Smith was a Revolutionary War hero. He accomplished so many things for the state of Tennessee. He surveyed the boundaries of the state of Tennessee. He named the state of Tennessee. He succeeded Andrew Jackson as Senator, and he served two terms. So, and on and on and on the things that he accomplished. I, I would be remiss, though, if I didn't take this opportunity to say, as the surveyor of the boundaries of the state of Tennessee, General Smith could have chosen any place in the state to reside, and he chose Sumner County. And I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that he did choose Hendersonville instead of Galton. So thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fuscel. I think so. Mr. Hyde.
I would like for any of the commissioners that would like to come, you're very welcome to come to honor the Beach High School baseball program if you'd like to come and stand with me at this time. Ms. Tucker and I have the privilege of, our commission district involves three high schools. Part of it is Beach, part of it is Station Camp, and a great deal of it is Hendersonville High School. We are about to honor one of the premier baseball programs of Sumner County this last year. And I'd like for them to come forward at this time, if they would, with the coaches and the... at this time, if they would, with the coaches and the baseball players. Come forward. Now I get to hear from several of these guys about the program all the time, and they kept me in the loop. They are very, very excited about the past and the present and the future of the baseball program at Beach High School, and we're very proud of that. Whereas the Beach High School baseball program, led by Coach Josh Carman and his outstanding coaching staff of David Patterson, is Mr. Patterson, okay, Chris McWherter, and Randy Darnell, and Randy taught for me many, many years ago, and Justin Valentine, whom I know very well, have completed their regular season of play with a remarkable record of 28 wins and 12 losses. And whereas the Beach High School baseball team played with pride and spirit, and through their diligent efforts have brought honor to themselves, their school, and Sumner County by their outstanding performance. And whereas the Beach High School baseball team's outstanding 2021 season had many highlights, including the district nine AAA tournament champions, region five AAA tournament champions, sectional game winner, and AAA state tournament appearance, final eight, and outstanding season. And whereas, and it lists many, many students here. But I want, at this time, if you would, guys, right here, if you'd just tell us your name, please. You.
Austin Mitchell.
Okay.
Jacob Davis.
Cooper Johnson.
Jackson Ross.
Austin Cavner.
Luke Fleming.
Cannon Lewis.
Ethan Jackson.
Parker Gillette.
Jackson Stolson.
Kane Cutral.
Ryan Davis.
Preston Drewus.
Brock Deffery.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the 19th day of July 2021, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the Beach High School baseball team for their outstanding season, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the Beach High School baseball team, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Hyde, seconded by Commissioner Mansfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
To the commissioners, thank you very much for recognizing these fine student athletes. It's difficult to be a high school student these days, but it's more difficult to be a student athlete. And these guys perform their duties well, day in and day out at practice, as well as in the classroom, many whom are here. Some have moved on to college and moved into their dorms. Some are still working on their craft in the summer. Some of our coaches are on the mission field in foreign countries, serving, and some of our coaches are on vacation. But I want to say congratulations to these guys on a fine season. Their hard work paid off in one of the toughest, most arguably toughest districts in the state, as well as toughest regions, and competing for the highest level of championships in athletic competition. And thank you very much for recognizing these young men.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coach, I thought maybe after we had the shameless plug for Galton, the shameless plug for Hendersonville, I thought you were going to say something like, you know, the championships come to Beach, or something like that.
That's where champions are made, on Shackle Island.
All right, Mr. Stewart.
Well, I have to go ahead and disagree with Commissioner Langford that there are champions at Station Camp as well. I'd like to call up Mr. Evan Puckett and Mrs. Whisper Thomas. Apologies. Coach Frack, could you please join us as well? I thank Commissioner Rhodes and Commissioner DeWitt for joining us up here. Thank you. So, I met Whisper and Evan in the lobby a few minutes ago, and these kids are just absolutely phenomenal in their respective fields of track and field at Station Camp High School. I'm going to start with the lady first, because my mom would kill me if I didn't. Whisper Thomas, this is a resolution honoring Whisper Thomas as Female Athlete of the Year. Whereas Whisper Thomas, a junior at Station Camp High School, was named Female Athlete of the Year, a well-deserved honor for her and her many accomplishments on the track and field. And whereas Whisper Thomas was one of the two from Sumner County to win first in a state championship competition, with Thomas bringing home the gold in the 100-meter dash and the silver medal in the 200-meter dash. And whereas Whisper Thomas's track and field season highlights are 2021 TSSAA state champion in the 100-meter dash, 200-meter dash state champion runner-up, Section III 200-meter dash champion, Sumner County meet champion in 100-meter, 200-meter, 400-meter, and 4x400-meter. An all-time Sumner County record holder in the 200-meter and 4x400-meter is a superlative season. And whereas, in addition to being an extraordinary track and field athlete, Whisper Thomas is also an outstanding student and has plans to attend college in the future, and has brought honor to not only herself, but to her school and also Sumner County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 19th day of July 2021, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend Whisper Thomas for her achievements and wishes her future success. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Whisper Thomas. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Stewart, seconded by Commissioner Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I just wanted to say thank you all so much for having us here tonight. And if there's by chance any poll, it would be great to have a few more tracks in the county to compete on.
We will get to work on that, Whisper. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Evan Puckett, this is a resolution honoring Evan Puckett as Male Athlete of the Year. Whereas Evan Puckett, a senior at Station Camp High School, was named Male Athlete of the Year, a well-deserved honor for his many successes on the track and field team. And whereas Evan Puckett was one of two Sumner County athletes to win first in a state championship competition, with Puckett taking home gold in the pole vault. And whereas Evan Puckett's track and field season highlights are 2021 TSSAA state champion in the pole vault, Section III champion, Sumner County champion, 2021 indoor champion, and all-time Sumner County pole vault record holder of 15 feet and 8 inches. I can't even reach that. Whereas, in addition to being an extraordinary track and field athlete, Evan Puckett is an outstanding student and will be attending the University of Memphis, and has brought honor not only to himself, but to his school and Sumner County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this 19th day of July 21, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend Evan Puckett for his achievements and wishes him future success. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Evan Puckett. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Stewart, seconded by Commissioner DeWitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I would like to thank all of y'all for this recognition, and I'd also like to thank my family, my friends, and also my coaches, who I would never be here without them. So I thank y'all, and thank you so much.
And commissioners, thank you all for having us tonight. These are two fine, fine student athletes. They represent not only our school, but the community very, very well. Whisper asked her when she knew she was fast, and she said, field days at the local elementary school said she beat all the boys and girls, and she is fast. And then Evan here, 15'8". Now, I don't know if you can, you know, I've been below him when I've seen him go up, and that's quite an accomplishment, you know. So again, thank y'all very much, and appreciate your happiness.
Thank you, sir.
And all kidding aside, you know, we joke and tease a lot, just as the kids do between the schools, but I hope everybody can see, regardless of where you are in the county, from top to bottom, east to west, north to south, we have exemplary kids and leaders and coaches, and it's a joy to watch them grow up. So congratulations to y'all, too, for all that you've done in representing Station Camp, Sumner County, and all you've accomplished. It's just such an honor, so congratulations. And Whisper, we had a girl at White House that won the state in the 400 one year, and she discovered she was fast freshman year in powder puff football, and ended up running the college track at Belmont. Congratulations. All right, Mr. Wright.
Ms. Blanch, if you wouldn't mind, come on up, young lady. I have a certificate of recognition for Ms. Blanch Putnam. She worked at the Sumner Camp, well, for the county, since 1984. I've known her from day one of my, hopefully, continued career with the Sumner County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, would you like to say anything?
Well, the day she left, everybody said that I was the oldest person there. I don't know what they meant by that. But Blanch has been a true, I can't say the words about it. She's just been inspiring. She's been with dispatch. I mean, she's worked all around the building. But everyone that's been in law enforcement in this county has known Blanch, if you've been there very long, so.
Good. A resolution honoring Ms. Blanch Putnam. Whereas Ms. Blanch Putnam first began serving Sumner County citizens in 1984 as a member of the Volunteer Ambulance Service, prior to coming to the sheriff's office. And whereas, over the span of her career, Ms. Putnam, sorry about that, has served as a dispatcher, dispatch supervisor, terminal agency coordinator, the matron to female prisoners, overseer of juveniles that were detained, and an occasional nurse. And whereas, Ms. Putnam was recognized as the statewide Terminal Agency Coordinator of the Year. She has countless letters of thanks and recognition from around the state for assistance and knowledge that she has provided to other agencies as an expert in the field of NCIC operations and compliance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of July 2021, that this body does hereby commend and honor Ms. Blanch for her outstanding and devoted service to Sumner County and its citizens. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Ms. Blanch. Thank you, hon.
Motion made by Commissioner Wright. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Guthrie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you all for recognizing me. I realize I've done a long term of service, but also I realize now that Sonny has caught up and has got the field up there of time and length of service with the department now that I have left.
Thank you, Ms. Putnam, for your service. We really appreciate all that you've done. And sometime, we'd like to hear all the stories. Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
May I continue? All these people retiring, I'm starting to realize I'm getting old, folks. I have a resolution honoring courtroom security officer, Nikki Booker. Nikki, if you don't mind, Ms. Laura, come on up with him, hon. I used to get gardening advice from Nikki's grandparents. They had a better green thumb than I did. Whereas Nikki Booker was employed by the Sumner County Sheriff's Office in September of 1993 as a courtroom security officer. And whereas Nikki Booker received a commendation in 2015, and again in 2018, for the good work that he performed as a courtroom security officer. And whereas Nikki Booker has elected to retire, and it is appropriate that he be recognized for his diligent service and dedication to the citizens of Sumner County, and the positive contribution he made to the lives of countless residents during his tenure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 19th day of July 2021, that this body hereby expresses its appreciation for the many years of service and dedication of Nikki Booker, and this body urges all citizens of Sumner County to acknowledge the accomplishments and contributions made by Nikki Booker to Sumner County. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mr. Nikki Booker. Nikki, not only is he an awesome courtroom officer and employee of the Sumner County Sheriff's Office, but Nikki's just an all-around good guy. Thank you, sir.
See? Motion made by Commissioner Wright, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I'd just say it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the Sumner County and the Sumner County Sheriff's Department, and I thank God for the opportunities and things that He has blessed me with. Thank you for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. All right, we've got the consent agenda items before you. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Krueger, seconded by Commissioner Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I've got two noes, Commissioner Mo Taylor, Commissioner Mansfield. Anyone else voting no? Okay, so by a vote of 21 to 2, I have our consent agenda passing. All right, your written reports are in your packet. Notaries, is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Sullivan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Let's vote.
Election of notaries is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Do we need to vote on zero-one? We passed it as a resolution. Do we need to take a separate vote on it?
No, no, it's just part of that.
Okay, okay. All right. Moving on down into our standing committees, Mr. Goode, committee on committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First announcement for committee on committees, Mr. Chairman, everyone should have noticed, September's rapidly, rapidly approaching, so you have your committee request list that we do every year on your desk. If you fill that out tonight, go ahead and turn it in to Jennifer or Mr. Kemp, but at the latest, get it to them by July thirty-first, and then we'll be dealing with that in September like always. Mr. Chairman, we did a regular session meeting for committee on committees tonight at six-thirty. For the library board, Beth Key was reappointed, and Anita Alice to take Jessica Hunter's place. It was unanimous, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna skip down and remove the airport regional. Mr. Lynch requested that not to be reappointed, so that's been removed. And the other is the redistricting committee, Mr. Chairman. After doing all the due diligence, talking to county mayor, law director, Ms. Ashley, and to make things simple, what we decided to do to, to appoint for the redistricting committee, which is our legislative committee, and make Lori Ashley an ex officio non-voting member. The, for reminder, that, and by the way, this, when you realize the list, it is geographically also pretty much covers the county as well. That's Chairman Langford, Baker, Sullivan, Hinton, Shell, Chris Taylor, Goode, Driver, and Lori Ashley, Ashley as the ex officio member. And again, that went through committee, and it was unanimous, I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rhodes. Uh, Mr. Mansfield.
I'll need to, Commissioner, will you?
Okay. Okay. All right, is there a second for, oh, did I have a second? Okay, so Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Mo Taylor has been nominated from the floor to serve on the redistricting committee. Any other nominees from the floor? Commissioner Mo Taylor.
If you recall, I was asked to be on this committee back, what, close to a year ago, probably.
Yes, sir.
I've served on this committee once before, back in, I think it was end of ten, first of two thousand eleven, Mr. The Eighth District, former chairman. This is a, I think I offer valuable insight on this committee, been through the process once before, and I would wish to represent my area.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, let's, I, I think probably the fairest thing since it came through committee unanimously is to take an up-down vote on Commissioner Taylor, without objection. Okay, let's do that.
It's gonna be under amendment one.
Okay.
And that's with the amending to the slate that was proposed.
To amend to the slate, a ye- a yes vote is to add Commissioner Mo Taylor to the election commission, a no vote is to not add him. Any questions about that?
Please clarify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Did you say it was unanimous?
Yes, I did. Okay, all right, let's vote.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote? Twenty-three votes are entered with ten affirmative votes, amendment fails to carry.
Okay, all right, so back to the main motion, Commissioner Mo Taylor.
I move to the nomination of Commissioner Steve Graves.
Okay. Commissioner Steve Graves is nominated. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Just to expedite things, we can vote one at a time, up and down. Is there anyone else that wishes to be nominated from the floor? Uh, Mr. Hyde, you're in the queue.
I have a concern, and, and I, I would be willing to just ask that Ms. Tucker, and I haven't even talked to Ms. Tucker, be appointed to the committee because if, the legislative committee, as far as I know, is there anyone in the Walton Ferry, Sanders Ferry Peninsula, that's a huge section of Hendersonville. I don't think there's anyone in, uh, the section over in the beach side of Hendersonville. We're, we're leaving out a huge, huge section of Hendersonville in this.
Hang on, Mr. Goode. Let, let Mr. Hyde finish, and I'll come to you. Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Oh, that's all I was gonna say, and I, I would, I'd like to see Ms. Tucker appointed to at least have a representative from a major portion of, of Hendersonville on the committee. I'm not sure the legislative committee is that spread out in representative. I, I would really like, personally, I think it would have been better to have studied the, the issue and, and had it spread out more throughout the county, representative of people that know the streets, the blocks, the areas. I've been through this, been on it, and I know what happens, and you need to have people generally familiar with the area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Are you making a nomination, Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Uh, who are you nominating? Just one.
Ms. Tucker.
Okay. All right, Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman, the previous speaker, Mrs. Krueger and I also share that peninsula, and also down to the, past the hospital, which has, includes beach school as well, just for that clarification. And just so everyone knows, it's never been through this process. No one can be drawn out of their district. That's part of the law, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Denon. So, there, there, nothing, nothing fishy's gonna change where anyone can be drawn out. And then the other thing I would say is, we just, as we've always tried to do, is respect the committee's process, and again, Ms. Ashley's recommendation, along with the mayor and Ms. Denon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
When did the law change where they could be drawn out of their districts? You won't be drawn out of your district in the past. You could serve in your current seat.
Until the end of your term.
Until the end of your term. For your next term, you could be drawn out of your district.
There could be, there could be a new district, correct?
So that's clarification.
Sure.
You can be drawn out of your district.
But not while you're sitting.
Yeah, they're not gonna kick you out the door right now.
Right.
But come next August or next May, you may not be, even be living in your district.
Right.
So you're gonna have to run in the district that you now live in, so you can be drawn out of your district.
Okay.
And I move to refer this back.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. All right, hang, hang on, let me, Mr. Wright, or Commissioner Taylor, let's hold on that, like I've got, right now, we're taking nominations, let me go through that, and then I'll, I'll entertain your motion. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a point of order?
I've got, I've got, I've got two motions, I've got a motion on the floor right now, I'll come to, well, we could do refer right now, okay?
Yep.
Right. Okay, all right, hang on tight, one second. Uh, is refer debatable?
Not debatable.
Well, and that's what I wanna know, because your mind of the rules are messed up. When you say refer, do you mean debatable or non-debatable?
Not, our rules say not debatable.
Not debatable, okay.
Which, which is sixteen.
And both of them are actually during refer and defer, not debatable according to Robert's rules.
Okay. My, my, our rules are set up.
Right.
Right, okay. So we're going non-debatable, sixteen votes to refer back to the legislative committee. So a yes vote is to refer to committee, a no vote is to continue, is to continue debate. It's not debatable, so let's vote on refer.
All right. Motion to refer the matter is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
What's that?
Can I just ask?
It's too late.
It's not debatable.
It's not debatable.
It's not debatable.
Motion with six affirmative votes, motion to refer fails to carry.
Okay, so we're back on, back on nominations. Uh, Ms. Tucker.
I wanna thank Mr. Hyde for his vote of confidence, but I would like to withdraw my name. I sit on committee on committees, and we chose to go with legislative committee and those chairs that are represented there, so I feel comfortable with that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Tucker. Commissioner Krueger.
I just, I'm kind of concerned about us, about the discussion being more about people being drawn out of their seats that they're elected to currently, than it is more about proper representation for the citizens of the county. And that's what the redistricting should be about. It should be about everybody, each district being split fairly with proper representation, not about whether your seat is in the same district next term or not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Krueger. Commissioner Hyde.
I was just gonna make the same comment that Commissioner Taylor made. It definitely is not a law that you cannot be drawn out of your district, because we very painstakingly, the last time, drew a couple of school board members, which probably will be affected this time, because it was, they're just now on the border. White House is one. There was commi- commissioners in the Westmoreland area. It, but it, that is not a law.
Yeah, I think the clarification is you can't be drawn, I think Mr. Taylor said, you can't be drawn out of your, if you've been elected, you serve out that term.
Right.
And then the new district.
You can serve out till August thirty-first.
Yeah, August thirty-first. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Mansfield.
I guess I echo the sentiment of the senior commissioner for the Tenth District about proper representation, and I guess I'd like to nominate Mr. Hyde from District Eight, since Commissioner Tucker declined, just to give him the representation, especially his experience having been chaired during this process and, and done this process a couple times, so I definitely think he would be a good asset to, as, in good representation for his side of the peninsula, as well as to this legislative body.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ta- or, excuse me, Mr. Mansfield. Uh, Mr. Taylor.
I wanna clarify something. My comments weren't made about, about worried about being drawn out of the district or anything like that. The only way you're gonna kick me out of my district is sell me to Allen County, Kentucky, or Macon County. I mean, you don't have anywhere else to go where I live, so.
So you're good.
My, my concern is the representation of the citizens of all of Sumner County, not just my district. I'm as concerned about the Tenth District as I am the First, and, and having a voice at the table on their concerns.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner, County Mayor, Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I understand commissioners' concerns, that this will be the, Mr. Hyde and I have been around a long time, and this will be the fourth redistricting I've experienced in, in my years of service, and I can tell you, in the previous three, before this one, a county commissioner was never drawn out of a district, ever. And I think you can confirm that, any commissioner that was here then. I will say this, I think there's a lot of interest in redistricting as far as commissioners go. It's gonna be hard to put everybody on there, represent every district. You, you'll have to have twelve members. I don't know that's, that's practical, but I want you to realize, and I know, speaking of Mr. Hyde, that he's been through this before several times, you have perimeters. They're not going to just allow you to do anything you, somebody would want to do that would be reckless. The state has perimeters, and there are certain things that you're going to have to account for, and in the end, no matter what this committee comes up with, you're gonna be able to vote for it as a collective body. So I think that some of the fears may be overblown, and I think this will be a pretty smooth process, but I will tell you, there's areas in the county that's grown tremendously, they're gonna shrink as far as landmass goes, and areas of the county that has grown, but not grown as rapidly, and those will expand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Uh, Ms. DeWitt. I gotta, I'll get you.
Am I good? I just wanna comment, I, I think that this is gonna be a challenging decision, no matter what. If you look at the, the legislative committee as it stands, if you haven't already figured this out, we have, from that committee, two from Gallatin, three from Hendersonville, one from Goodlettsville, one from Bethpage, and one from Portland. As the mayor just mentioned, I know it, it would be inappropriate or ineffective to have twelve members, one from each district. With all due respect to Mr. Graves and Mr. Hyde, I don't see where it would be appropriate to add additional representation from Bethpage or Hendersonville. I think we've, we've reached a pretty good balance with this, this slate as it's been proposed, so I just wanted to comment on my voting against those additions.
Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just pointed out also, as we have, as every committee has offered for years now, any commissioner can come to any committee and have input on any issue, and that, to my knowledge, that's never been questioned. So just FYI on that one, and, oh, time limit, Mr. Chairman, the, on the, Mrs. Ashley wanted this committee formed, when I started talking to her about this, by August, she's anticip- by our August meeting here, 'cause she's anticipating that we may, we, as soon as the state gives them the go, they wanna have a meeting as soon as possible. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Hinton.
Once the committee does its study, the results of that study will be forwarded ahead of time before the commission meeting. You will, is that not true? We'll have adequate time to review the lines? Is, is that gonna be, can that be generated to be thorough enough that the old lines will be shown, and the new proposed lines will be on that? So everybody will get plenty of chance to, to come up with proposed amendments if they choose to do that, so.
Yes, sir.
It's, we ought to strive hard to make this a very, very open, above-board process, and nobody gets surprised when they walk in and they know they've.
I, I agree, Mr. Hinton, and I think to, you know, for us to be completely transparent, I think, like, I agree, like, maps, plenty of time to look at it, probably a presentation from the committee about, about what they found. I do think, you know, one of the things that we're going to face with this committee that's going to be tough is, and I'm not speaking for or against anything that we've talked about, I'm just being truthful here, is, is that the census data's coming out so late, it's going to create some challenges. The committee's gonna have to put in a lot of hours to be able to get this turned around, because normally we have, I would say, Mr. Holt, you've done, Mr. Hyde, you've done this longer than I have, but I wanna say we would have normally had six to eight, maybe ten more months with the data than, than what we get this time. We're anticipating, I think, probably October is what I've heard of getting data back.
This is the latest, latest.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's going to be a real challenge, and Mr. Hinton, I, I, personally, I agree with you that we need as much transparency as possible.
Yeah, we, we may not exactly agree with all of the lines, but we, nobody should be able to say that they weren't aware until tonight, come to vote on it.
Yes, sir.
Make sure we avoid that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Graves.
I just got a couple of comments. I believe this is part of knowing the county, I think, far as the Gallatin North, and I believe Mr. Hyde, the, the south end of the county, I believe, I'm not speaking for him, but I'm bragging on him actually, 'cause he knows those roads, just like I know them up in the northern part of the county. I've been on the commission several years, and I just, whether, whether you vote for me or not, that's not a problem, I just want the representation that we need to perform this task, and that's, knowing the parts of the county, the roads, the landmarks and so forth, is a big, a big part of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. Commissioner Wright.
I heard that there's representatives from Gallatin, from Hendersonville, from Portland, and from Bethpage. There is another city on the far north of this county. It's called Westmoreland, Tennessee. There's a little community where I'm from, Oak Grove, Brackentown. We still pay property taxes, we still pay will taxes. We purchase a lot in Sumner County. We pay sales tax. We're just asking for representation. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Just to point something out, we talk about numbers and everything. Coming before you next is a board that you're gonna be changing to make eleven members. So that's just one, less than twelve, best I can figure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All right, so I think to, to be fair, we voted up and down on Commissioner Mo Taylor because he was the first one nominated, so to be fair, I think we need to go one at a time and, and vote up or down, so. So I had, the next one in line to be nominated was Commissioner Steve Graves. So when Mr. Kemp queues the, queues the vote, then we will, we will vote, a yes vote is to add Mr. Graves to the slate, a no vote is to not add him to the slate. Mr. Hyde is in the queue. Mr. Hyde?
Ms. Chairman, I, for fear that someone might think that what I want to do is political in any way, I want to withdraw my name from consideration. I will be there, and I will take an interest in what's going on.
Yes, sir.
But I don't want this to become political football. I'm just very interested that it's representative. And I do have a, after we do these votes, I have another suggestion, whenever you think it's appropriate, on a better system. And may I ask, while I have the floor, how this got to the Committee on Committees? Because I appointed the last redistricting committee, and I'm just wondering how it left the chairman's prerogative to a committee?
And, Mr. Wright, I would just say simply, like, I felt like all the other committees that we've appointed since, in the seven years that I've been here, almost seven years, we've run it through Committee on Committees. And so, Mr., I had, some people had communicated with me, and I shared those names with Mr. Goode. Some people had, I believe, communicated with Mr. Kemp, and Ms. Dinnon, and Mr. Holt. And I had Mr. Goode gather all those names and then look at it in Committee on Committees and make a recommendation.
Okay. I want to take my name right now, I have another suggestion out of the mix.
Okay.
But I will say, like Mr. Wright has said, there is going to be an enormous section of Hendersonville, my district, Ms. Tucker's district, there would be probably 12,000 to 15,000 people without a voice.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right, our vote is on, Mr. Graves? Yes, sir?
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to withdraw my name.
Okay.
For the reason, I believe that it wouldn't, I will have a representative in the 3rd District because of the Legislative Committee, but in opinion, I believe this is the wrong way to go about it. You had other commissioners that wanted to be on this redistricting, and you actually just cut them off, and I believe that was the wrong way to go about it, just to nominate a group, a committee group of people. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. All right, so we're back on the main motion. Mr. Hyde?
When would it be appropriate?
I think now, Mr. Hyde.
Okay. I would like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that whether it be you or the Committee on Committees, that, so there can be no complaints whatsoever from anything that's done in this, even the citizens and where they vote. I would like to make a suggestion that there be one commissioner appointed from each district. I don't care if it's me or not, but absolutely every corner of this county would be represented then, and that we have one, whoever appoints it, that we have one commissioner per district on a redistricting committee.
Is that, are you offering that as an amendment, Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I got a motion from Mr. Hyde, second by Commissioner Mo Taylor. The motion, the amendment, as I hear it, is that we would replace the slate of candidates offered by Committee on Committees with one commissioner from each district. Is that fair, Mr. Wright?
That's right. And, you know, if the vast majority of that happens to be those that are already on the Legislative Committee, that's all right. But we would be represented throughout the county.
Okay. All right, so we will, a yes vote is to replace the slate of candidates with one commissioner from each district. A no vote is to continue on to the motion with the slate of candidates recommended by Committee on Committees.
The amendment for 12, all 12 districts to be represented is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? With 11 affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry. Back on the main motion.
Okay. I see no one else in the queue. Our main motion, oh, hang on, Commissioner Taylor?
I'll move to table.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Taylor moves to table. Seconded by Commissioner Mansfield.
This is a no debate, 16 votes.
Okay. No debate requires 16 votes to table. What's that?
Table until next month?
What's the time limit on table? Table to next month?
Yes.
What's that?
Yes.
Okay. Table to, table to the August meeting. Okay? No debate requires 16 votes. A yes vote is to table, a no vote is to not to table, and continue on to the main motion.
Motion to table is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote? With five affirmative votes, motion to table fails to carry.
Mr. Hyde?
Ms. Chairman, I'm, I appreciate the close vote, but I'm sort of baffled that anyone would be opposed to everyone in the county having direct voting input in this decision. Therefore, I'll try one more thing to make this more representative. I would suggest that we have the Legislative Committee plus the assurance that there will be one person appointed by the chairman of this body from districts that are not represented on the Legislative Committee. So that may be three more, two more, whatever. And that, then we have the whole county with a voice.
Okay.
You may have a school board district that's got two, or they don't have one, because they're different districts in there.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Hyde's made the motion, let me make sure I've got this right, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor, that we would have Legislative plus the chairman of the Commission would appoint, districts unrepresented by the, by the Legislative Committee.
Yes.
Okay? Okay? All right, so I do want to point out, the Law Director had one comment that that would make sure that the county commission was represented, it would not guarantee that school board districts were represented necessarily by the commission. So I'm just, that's Law Director's comment, I'm just adding that for your consideration. Ms. Dewitt?
I just want to make the comment, if that were followed, I don't know if the commissioner realized that that would entail adding five additional members to what's been proposed, eight plus five, that'd be 13. And the reason that, you know, of course, I would love to have representation from our District 6, I would love, and I plan to participate, as was mentioned by others, that if we're not on this committee, we have every opportunity to attend and make our voices heard, but a committee of 12 or 13 would be very not nimble. You know, we need to do this quickly, as Commissioner Goode mentioned, that Lori Ashley needs our help to be able to run through this committee as quickly as possible. There's a lot of work to do with not a lot of time. Unlike a library board that was referred to earlier that meets on a set schedule, this board is going to need to be more nimble, and I just don't see how that would be possible. So I, again, support the current recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Chris Taylor?
I just want to reiterate what Dana said. I've been involved in tons of boards and committees outside of the county commission. The one I could think of, we were centralizing homicide investigations in Nashville, pretty big. What I've always found, in my experience in doing this for over 20 years now, is that when you start getting bigger, you get a lot slower. And that's the only thing I was going to say is, the reason we have a committee system to say is because we trust the committees to do the hard work, and regardless, it always comes in front of this commission, the entire commission. And we've seen, you know, if there's questions about it, we address them, we open it up. And I also think it's really important that if you're concerned about it, you come to the committee meeting. But I can say without a doubt, we get the census data in October, we meet, hopefully October, but let's say it comes a little late, we don't meet till November, we have to by law have it done in December. I mean, we don't, we don't get a choice on that. And so if you're trying to do three, even three or four meetings in a month period and talking Thanksgiving, Christmas, and everything else involved, you're really going to get into a little bit of a scheduling nightmare. If we had four or five months, I don't think it would be as bad, but I can just say, from having done this lots of times in the past, if you get that many people involved in anything, it just comes to, it comes to a grinding halt. That's why we have committees. Let's trust the committee system, this, we do it for budget, we do it for every single other thing. I don't know why we wouldn't do it for this. And knowing the fact that it's going to be open, everybody's going to be there that chooses to be there, and it's got to come in front of all of us again. That's just my thought. We're kind of crunched with time this year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Commissioner Tinsley?
I think everybody in here recognizes that this is probably one of the committees that I most wanted to serve on, but I do recognize that we are under an extreme time crunch. The federal government has, due to COVID, had a little bit of slowing down in the process, and of course, you know, everybody's going to be, you know, pulling petitions in December, January for these, so I think we need to just go ahead and go on with the committee's recommendation, and that we all just become active participants in this committee process, which will probably be one month's due.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just, I'd say ditto and echo the last three commissioners' every word, but I was here when we did this, and one of my colleague in the 10th noted that they, we appointed a committee then. I'd requested to be on the committee then, and no one in the 10th District was at the time, so, and no one questioned it, because it was the logic of, we have to form a committee, and we have to do the committee's work. That's it.
Okay. All right. There's no one left in the queue. Let's vote. A yes vote is to approve the Committee on Committee delegation for the redistricting committee, which is the Legislative Committee plus ex officio Lori Ashley, our Elections Commissioner. A no vote is to reject the slate.
We have an amendment, Mr. Hyde's amendment.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Our, I apologize, Mr. Hyde. Our amendment is to Legislative Committee plus one commissioner appointed by the chair from each of the unrepresented districts. So a yes vote is to go with that slate of candidates, a no vote is to continue back to the main motion put forward by Committee on Committees.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote? With eight affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry.
Mr. Hinton?
If this is out of order, why, just tell me and I'll shut up. How about if we, how about if we do an amendment that guarantees that we'll have a study session before we come down here to sit down to vote this in?
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think, I think we can just include that, like, I will give that directive, that before it comes to the floor, that we have at least one study session presentation before it comes to the floor.
Yeah, and let's, let's be fairly succinct on that what we have in front of us is going to, is what's going to make it to the floor, unless something comes out of that study session that causes a change of mind. So let's, let's for sure be wide open, 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 open to everybody that wants to be involved in this one, before it takes place.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Hinton. Mr. Hyde?
Just a little correction here. This is not going to be, I mean, it may be this year, but this will not be a laborious kind of process. There will be someone from the state who will present possible data changes in blocks of population that they have designated. Say, block, these streets will be 50 people. This, if you go here, it'll be 100 people. And we did not, even though we had a large committee before, we did not take a great deal of time in doing this. The state has it mapped out pretty well for you and what you do.
Okay.
So it's not a laborious kind of situation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right, let's, let's vote.
All right, the redistricting committee that was submitted by the Committee on Committees is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 21, 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wish to vote? All 23 votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote? With 19 affirmative votes, Committee on Committees' recommendation is approved.
Commissioner Taylor?
I have a formal objection filed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, Mr. Goode, anything else for Committee on Committees?
That's it, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan, education?
No.
Oh, Mr. Hyde, did you want the floor? I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
I was just going to say.
Hang on one second, Mr. Hyde, let me get your microphone back turned on.
Are on the Legislative Committee. If there are two people for one district, I think it would be nice of one of them to ask to resign and let the chairman appoint someone from another district. And that's, I'm not making that into part of the motion, that's just up to the Legislative Committee. I think it'd be awfully nice if you have three people from Gallatin and half of Hendersonville, like we have there, not represented, or a third of it. It'd be nice if one of them said, hey, I'll resign and let someone from that area, and not me, I'd be perfectly happy with Ms. Tucker to be represented. So I'm just asking the legislative members to consider that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. All right, Mr. Sullivan, education?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Driver, emergency services?
No.
Okay. Legislative, Mr. Ring?
Yes, sir. 21-07-02, authorizing the number of members on the Sumner County Library Board to be increased from nine to 11 members, an ISO move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Krueger. Mr. Hinton?
This, this is probably necessary. It seems to me like the state keeps requiring or asking for more stuff from the, from the library board. And of course, you've got to remember that they don't make the big bucks like we do. They just, they just meet free gratis. So there's probably enough work for the, for the library board to do to justify an expanded library board, and I've talked to some of them about that. Now, however, you do, you do have on your email, an email concerning libraries, and I would, I would request as earnestly as I know how, that you read that email that's been sent to you, and considering in great detail before we start messing with things that's worked pretty good for several years. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I had a question with how library boards work. I went to the meeting at Legislative on last Monday. Is that a state statute that requires the county to form a library board? Is, is, because I'm just curious, like, since all the libraries in the cities, just out of naivete, why is the county in charge of the city libraries? Or is there a reason that cities don't have them?
Yeah, they're ours.
They're county libraries.
It's a shared funding.
It's just a shared issue. So, also, the second thing, I just had, I guess, a question, and some good comments were made here tonight about, you know, I was also at the meeting, and one of the explanations given for going from 11 to nine members, to 11 from nine members was because some of the members just didn't show up and do their job. So it's a little confusing to me why we would add more versus just why don't you eliminate or omit members from the board who aren't doing their job, instead of increasing the number when, you know, so tonight vigor is slower and would not be as nimble. Some comments about the redistricting committee, I would try to argue the same thing for the library board, I guess. I just don't see that as, it was just kind of an odd comment, odd argument, and really didn't, wasn't based on logic, in my opinion, one excuse for making it bigger because some people aren't doing their job. So I would be opposed to.
I think Ms. Dinnon's asked to respond. I think she may have some answers for your question.
There are people that are not as active as others. All the board members do participate somewhat. You can't just kick somebody off of a board because they don't come. Once they're appointed, they're just like you. You have a term that they get to stay. That's not the issue. The issue is there are more and more burdens, issues that the state is putting on libraries, and they need subcommittees. And some of the people are not as active wanting to participate in subcommittees. So they've gone out, and the law allows them to have up to 11. Most counties seem to have larger committees, and this will give them the opportunity to form subcommittees to address things like ADA issues or bulk buying, all those different things that the state is expecting them to now visit.
Wouldn't it be, I guess, more prudent for the leadership of the library board to encourage their members to be active in the board, instead of not, not doing what they're appointed to do?
I don't think they're not doing what they're appointed to do. I think sometimes, just like our committees, there are certain people that can come to a meeting once a week, there are other people that, because of their work schedule, can't.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Mr. Hinton.
I ought to count up some time to tell you how many library board meetings I went to. But, but it's, it's, the pay's too high, I guess, is the reason. They don't get paid anything, and they meet every other month, and, and the type people you'd like to get to serve on that board oftentimes have real jobs. So it's, it's a little bit difficult sometime to, to get enough people together to function. And there is, every year that goes by, there's more stuff required to do. The state wants you to do this, and this, and this, and you could, you can talk to them. We have a representative that, not our elected representative, but, but the, the state library system has people that will answer any question you want to ask them about our library boards. And, and, and they do, they do a credible job. Of course, you have, you have some people on there that don't, that have a conflict, can't show up, and they just meet every other month, and, but there is, there is some committees that need to be functioning, and, and hopefully, these extra folks will give them an opportunity to have enough people on that committee to take care of the things that the state would certainly like for us to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. All right. There's no one else in the queue. Let's vote on authorizing the Sumner County Library Board to increase from nine to 11 members.
The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. All 23 votes are entered. Anyone wish to change your vote? With 20 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. Resolution 21-07-03, allowing repayments, prepayments of real and personal property taxes in the office of the Sumner County Trustee, an ISO move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ring. Second by Commissioner Kruger. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Michelle.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple quick comments. If you haven't been by the new justice site, it is pretty exciting. We had the tower crane go up this past couple weeks, and it's pretty exciting to see that in downtown Gallatin. So if you haven't been by, drive by, see that. Also, just in case you're asked, there's been a couple questions about why the American flag is not flying on the tower crane, so I'll just go ahead and give you the answer to that. It is flying on site, and in order to fly it on the crane properly, it should be lit, to which that's still a residential area. So we chose to just to have the flag that's on site flying on the pole. Also, we will have a groundbreaking invitation coming out in the next couple of weeks. Invite everybody to come out to the site for the groundbreaking. So look for that email in your mailbox within the next couple of weeks. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Hinton, Highway.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Becker, financial management.
Yes. We actually met earlier today, and for next month's full commission meeting will be, it'll be discussed and linked, but we did vote to change the vehicle use policy. So I just want to give everybody a heads up for next month, we'll be, we can talk about that more.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Budget. Mr. Taylor.
He bans you. All right. Yes, sir. I'll make it quick. Two things. A clarification that we got from the law director and everybody else was, when you do a pay increase for a county commission, it does not go in effect for that sitting commission. It takes effect after they, their term has been up. So the minimal raise, whatever it might be, will not take effect until '22, just so everybody